Ten, nine, eight, seven, six, five, four, three, two, one. We're live.
Resume the regular meeting of the Morganton City Council and I'll tell you that we have not had a crowd like this in a long time and they want me to drag it along a little bit to keep y'all here, but before we do the prayer and before we do the pledge of allegiance and all that, we're gonna make a comment and I'm going to make a motion. So, a lot of the people that are interested here and I want, I want the Freed's to go home and, and, and sit with Tara earlier than expected. So, I'm gonna make a motion to direct our city attorney and city staff to present to the council a proposed changes to the city's animal control ordinance to address concerns raised here tonight. Here a second.
Second.
Have a motion second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Alright, so it's passed. So, what we will be doing, just so you'll know, we're either gonna try to get it back at the October city council meeting, you'll see about it in the newspaper, or you can call me on the telephone, or one of these gentlemen and ladies here up here, but you'll know that the first October in, first Monday in October, we will possibly, I always say that, possibly have a change to our ordinance and we look forward to maybe having a similar crowd in October.
And might I add that on that note, the September 28th deadline, you, you don't have to worry about that deadline until some, any kind of changes that could get considered, if they choose to consider changes, have been considered.
Okay. I hope y'all are all pleased. And I'm gonna give you, I'm gonna give you thirty seconds, those that wanna leave, okay?
But if you wanna say.
You're welcome to say however, for the rest of the meeting. Let's not chase them away.
We do have excitement.
Alright, at this time, I'm gonna call on Forrest Fleming to lead us with our pledge of allegiance.
Please join me if you will in, in the pledge of allegiance to our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you much and please be seated.
And we are now gonna welcome our friend and, uh, our neighbor Reverend Tom Bland, pastor at the First Baptist Church, to lead us with our invocation tonight. Good to see you, Tom.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let us pray. Almighty and all-loving God, we give you thanks and praise for this unspeakably beautiful day that we have enjoyed. Truly, on a day such as this, the heavens have proclaimed your glory, the firmament has shown forth your handiwork, and we are grateful. We are grateful indeed for all of your creation and pray that truly each one of us may do his or her part to be better stewards of your creation, whatever ways that you direct us to do so. We're thankful too, Lord, that we live in such a wonderful, wonderful country called the United States of America, of which 201 years ago today Francis Scott Key, in the midst of a troubling but hopeful time, wrote of the land of the free and the home of the brave. We're thankful, Lord, that our freedom has been demonstrated already so powerfully this evening in these chambers and we're grateful that people can come, whoever they are, from far and near, and whatever their concerns, and lay all of these before the council and the mayor and the city staff and know that each one will be heard. We're grateful for all of the freedoms we have as Americans and we're certainly especially grateful tonight for this beautiful city called Morganton. We're thankful for the community spirit that's here, that indeed neighbor comes out to support neighbor when there's a concern. We're grateful for every sign of compassion in so many people when there is trouble, when there's a need. We're thankful for the great history of this city demonstrated so beautifully throughout this building with these photographs on display and we're thankful that we can gather tonight and express concerns but also express support, knowing that we share in that freedom and we share in the beauty of this place. We're grateful for a good and safe and wonderful festival just passed. We're thankful too for the dedicated service all these years of our mayor, Mel Cohen, and the gifts and talents and hard work that has been so evident on our city council and with the city staff. We pray that you would grant the very wisdom of your Holy Spirit to each one in these challenging and yet so hopeful times, that each might know how best to conduct business, even tonight, that each might know how best to lead or to facilitate decisions that are made tonight and days to come. We're grateful for those who defend our freedom in various places, including many from this community and from this county and area. We're thankful for our hard-working city staff and especially tonight, we give you thanks for our public safety, who lay their lives on the line every day, that we might continue to be free, even here. Help us, Lord, as we reflect upon our sins and shortcomings, to seek your forgiveness and to do all we can to be better citizens of this place and better citizens of your holy kingdom. And we ask these things in the name of the Father and the Son, Jesus Christ, and the Holy Spirit. Amen.
Tom, thank you for a beautiful, well-taken prayer. Thank you a lot. Okay, introduction of our city council. On my right is Forrest Fleming, city councilman, Louyvene, our city attorney, I'm Mel Cohen, your mayor, Sally Sandy, our city manager, Sidney Simmons, city councilman, John Cantrell, city councilman, Kelly Russell, recording secretary, and Becky Brinkley is over there interpreting for our deaf community. Again, welcome everyone. It's good to have so many people here. This is the time that we wanna recognize our Morganton Big League Softball Southeast Regional Championship Team. I'm gonna call Gary Lindhart to the microphone, but I wanna first say that these are beautiful, beautiful players, they, they, your reputation was because of the way y'all handled yourself when you went to Delaware as well as in Florida first. You were known to be the friendliest and the most courteous team down there and up there, so again, I wanna welcome you and Gary, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mel. No doubt, an outstanding group of young ladies. The Morganton Recreation Department joined Little League in 2003. We've been very successful during that time. We've won 25 district championships, we've won five state championships and two regional championships during this thirteen years in the program, which is pretty well unheard of. There are sixteen regions in Little League of baseball and softball. There's eight U.S. and eight international. In baseball and softball, there were thirty-five thousand teams this past year and a hundred and fifty-seven thousand, I'm sorry, thirty-five thousand leagues and a hundred and fifty-seven thousand teams in more than eighty countries. Winning a regional championship tournament is difficult and is special. To advance to a world stage and have the opportunity to play against teams from California, Indiana, Delaware, Louisiana, the Philippines, Italy, and Puerto Rico was an opportunity of a lifetime. Champions from all over the world and Morganton was there. I'm proud of the accomplishments of this team, its coaches and the families, they represented us well. Manager for the team this year, Mike Hassan, we all know here that Mike was a former retired city recreation employee, I know Mike well, and I know if I had a child that that's the kind of person I would want coaching my child. Great guy, great job. I know Mike, I know why Mike does it, I watch Mike and I see Mike and I, I know when, when he sees that smile on a player's face, when they make the big hit, make the big play, well, how important that is to him and he loves to see it. I also know when Mike sees that player who doesn't make the big play, doesn't get the big hit, that he's there to encourage him and let him know all the things they did earlier in the season that allowed them to make it to the 2015 World Series. So, I'd like to bring Mike Hassan up.
Thank you, Mayor Mel and city council members, Sally, city attorney, I appreciate the opportunity to be here and speak on behalf of these young ladies. It's been a whirlwind, it's been a wonderful opportunity and, you know, when things like this happen, it happened real quick and there's not much time to turn around and even think about or realize what you've done or what's getting, what's going on. So, you just have to kick in gear and, and that's, that's easily done and what makes, what really, really has made that easier to be done is to be supported by a city and a city council and the citizens of this city for us to be able to do that, because I didn't have to look back and worry about taking care of a lot of issues and the logistics of, of going here, going there and handling entries and getting meeting deadlines, all I had to do was coach the team. Cause our recreation department, of course, I'm a little biased, but, but it's not without honesty, is one of the best in the country and it's, it's well-known around this country. Cause being in Florida and being in Delaware, people knew our relationship to Little League and where we had been with them and people spoke to it. As a matter of fact, they still would like for us to revisit some of those things from some of the coaches there. But again, getting back to what, what really helped us to be able to perform on that stage and, and again, that stage being the largest that we could possibly get to was the support of our fans and our city and, and its leadership. And if I could take a minute to introduce the girls and mention the girls, and we've got several that aren't here, and honestly, I think I've got the best ballplayers in the county or some of them. And the, when you're, when you are that good, you have to, at high school level, you have other obligations at high school sports, so that's where some of them are tonight. Some of them are in college. The, uh, yeah, we've got three in college that couldn't be here, that was Leah Hassan, Kaitlyn Clark, and Logan Smithers. Then we've got four that are playing volleyball and y'all help me get this, Brittany's, Westbrook's is volleyball, Tabby Pearson is volleyball, Bethany is volleyball, and Michaela Queen is playing volleyball. And then Hannah Bum, Haley, Haley Bumgarner is, she had to work tonight. So, all these girls are competing, are committed to other obligations, but the ones that are here tonight, I'll recognize them, Jordan Probst, if you'd stand up when I call your name, Jordan Probst, Nikki Lewis, they didn't know they were gonna have to do this, Nikki Lewis, Michaela Lovelace, Kaylee Cook, Casey Cook, these are sisters, Kayla Hunt, and Rebecca Epley, and my coaches Rodney Bumgarner and Jody Lewis. We have one coach that she couldn't be here with us tonight, she's also in school and she's an ex-player of one of the big league teams that participated throughout the years. Lindsay Alton, she's also a coach on this team. But again, you know, with that opportunity to go, there's a lot of, when you get to this point, you can't prepare for it in, in several ways, but primarily in a financial way. We have all year to prepare, our years to prepare, and we have, some of us on this team, seven years training and practice, finally reached that pinnacle, but we've been able to, to practice and prepare for it, but a lot of, in a lot of ways financially, you can't do that, because it does happen pretty quick and it's a competition, so you don't know if you're gonna be there or not. So, anyway, in doing that, that's a peace of mind that I've always entered this with, having been part of the city for several years and, and playing under the city's sanction that I, I didn't have to worry about. I knew our city would be there to support us and help us whatever way they could and they stepped up this time as no, as they have always and made it, made it possible for our parents to be able to participate and come and you don't know until you get there how much that really means. And there was a lot of plays and a lot of things that happened on this level that you wouldn't want them to miss and that you would wanna be part of and as we all that have children would know, those are special times that you don't get maybe but one time in a lifetime. And that was done and because of our city's support and belief in that family system, we were able to do that and our parents were able to participate and go with us along the way and a lot of cities did not have that support and it was tough on a lot of them. We were well talked about and our leadership was well respected because of what she did for, for us and these young ladies and their families. I'd like to ask Pam if she would come, Pam Cook, if she'd come up and speak to you from a parent perspective for a second, if you don't mind.
Good evening. First, I would like to take a moment to acknowledge and give thanks to God for allowing our girls to have this wonderful opportunity. He's kept them safe on and off the field, He provided safe travels, and we're thankful that each and every young lady on the team had a family member to travel and give them support. When we talk about sports, we think of a team, but on this team, our coaches say we're not a team, they have been taught that we are a family. The coaches and parents have demonstrated that as a family, we pray together, we work together, we laugh together, and when there's a need, we pull together to meet the needs of the family. Here in Morganton, we're not just a community, a city or a county. It's a privilege not only to be a part of the Morganton family, but to have the opportunity to raise our children here. And this past summer, our children saw a demonstration of what a family is and saw what it is to demonstrate the lessons that we try to instill in them. And this past summer, when there was a need, the city of Morganton stepped up and helped meet the need. And as a parent, I would like to take a moment to thank the city of Morganton for the financial support you gave to allow us to be a part of supporting our children in their achievement. Without your financial support, we not, would not have been able to go and support our girls and I'm sure I speak the same sentiment from every parent here. Words cannot express the appreciation we have for the priceless gift you have given us and the opportunity to support our children in the pinnacle of their softball career. We would also like to thank and acknowledge Gary Lindhart for his hard work and time he gave on behalf of the girls and their family. What a wonderful family we have here in Morganton. Thank you so very much.
Thank you, Pam. Thank you, Pam. And I'll shorten this up, but I'd just like to say a couple, a couple more things, you know, Mayor, you were talking about how these girls exemplified the character in the city of Morg, and they really did. You, you got a lot to be proud of. We were, it came down to us and Team Italy for the sportsmanship and character award and of course, Team Italy won it, but we hung out with them and we got to know those girls really well. And I'll just tell you, today, these girls made such friendships that possibly today in Lombardi, Italy, there's some Morganton shirts walking around on the street of Italy, cause these girls traded clothes with them and whatever they had. So, that's the kind of relationships that are, are developed and built at these, these events. And, and I'll say one other thing is it was said, and I can't remember who said it, I, I think it was Billy Joe Patton, Gary can correct me on this, that one of the best honors that you can get, I've won a lot of trophies and I've won a lot of, been on a lot of big stages, but nothing to this magnitude. You know, you can spend a lot of money year-round buying your way into a World Series here or there, but you can't here. You have to earn your way and that's what makes this special. But I'll tell you, and, and what even makes it more special is when you're recognized by your city, by your hometown. Any trophy doesn't hold a candle to that, because I think he said, Billy Joe said that, you know, all those accolades and trophies and awards that he received didn't mean anything as much to him as being recognized by his city. It'll, you'll never be forgotten by them and we appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you. And let me tell you, we already know that we have a world-class recreation department in Morganton. We mean that sincerely, always have known it. Okay, y'all want to take a moment, you're gonna stay all night. You're welcome to stay. Oh, whoa, 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 whoa. Can't let you go yet. Proclamation.
We're getting ready to go to practice.
Let me read this long proclamation honoring the 2015 Morganton Big League Softball Southeast Region Championship Team, whereas, the 2015 Morganton Big League Softball Team comprised of team members Leah Hassan, Ashley Lewis, Kay, Kay, Kaylee Cook, Casey Cook, Bethany Klein, Brittany Westbrook's, Logan Smithers, Rebecca Epley, Tabitha Pearson, Kayla Hunt, Michaela Queen, Michaela Lovelace, Jordan, hard names, Mike, Jordan Probst, Haley Bumgarner, Kaitlyn Clark, coaches Rodney Bumgarner and, and Jody Lewis and manager Mike Hassan, and whereas the team represented District Seven and won to become the North Carolina State Champions, and whereas the team then advanced to win the Southeast Region Championship in Fort Myers, Florida, and whereas, the team was one of eight teams from the United States to one of eleven in the world to qualify for the 2015 Big League Softball World Series, Sussex, Delaware, and whereas, the hard work, skill, determination, good sportsmanship, and the heart demonstrated by the Big League Softball Team not only brings accolades to the players and their families, but also instills pride in the entire community and the Big League Softball Team deserves to be publicly recognized for their pursuit of excellence. Therefore, by the power, authority, and privilege vested in the mayor of the city of Morganton and with pride and joy, it is hereby proclaimed that congratulations are extended to the players and coaches of the 2015 Morganton Big League Softball Team for their outstanding athletic achievement in winning the Southeast Region, Regional Championship. And in recognition of the success of the team, this proclamation shall be recorded in the official records of the city of Morganton, so that future generations may know of the success of the 2015 Morganton Big League Softball Team, given under the hand and seal of the mayor of the city of Morganton on the fourteenth day of September 2015. Mel Cohen, mayor, Sally Sandy, city clerk. It's a motion, guys.
Second.
Alright, second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Welcome to the meeting. Want you to go well and safe into your adulthood and hopefully go on further and even make it to the big leagues. But big leagues, big leagues, okay? Thank you and God bless you for being here and the coaches.
Families.
And the families, by the way.
The reals of orders.
Yeah, the real. Okay, I'll go ahead and do the constitution. Constitution Week 2015, and I'm gonna make, well, okay, whereas, September fifteenth, seventeenth, 2015 marks the 228th anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by Constitutional Convention, and whereas, it is fitting and proper to officially recognize this magnificent document and the, the anniversary of its creation, and whereas, it is fitting and proper to officially recognize the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate the occasion, and whereas, Public Law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America, designating September seventeenth through twenty-three as Constitution Week. Now therefore, I, Mel Al Cohen, mayor of the city of Morganton, do hereby proclaim September seventeenth through twenty-three, 2015, to be Constitution Week in Morganton, and ask our citizens to reaffirm the ideals the framers of the Constitution had in 1787. In witness thereof, I have hereunto set my hand and caused to be affixed the seal, great seal of the city of Morganton on this, the fourteenth day of September in the year of our Lord 2015. Mel Cohen, mayor, Sally Sandy, city, city clerk, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Come to the microphone. Ms. Davis? And you're welcome to say anything you would like and I'll.
All I wanna say, Mr. Mayor, is on behalf of Quaker Meadows, a chapter of the National Society of the Daughters of American Revolution, which is 113 members strong and still growing here in Morganton, we wanna thank you very much for helping us honor this special occasion. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Alcohol, Joe, you wanna go to the microphone? Alcohol and drug addiction recovery month 2015, a proclamation. Whereas, prevention of substance use does work and treatment can be effective, an estimated seventeen-hundred people are in recovery in Morganton, nine-thousand people are in recovery in Burke County, six-hundred thousand people are in recovery in North Carolina, and twenty-three million people are in recovery across the nation. And whereas, preventing and overcoming substance use is essential to achieving healthy lifestyles both physically and emotionally. And whereas, recent cost-benefit studies consistently find that benefits to society that result from the treatment of alcohol and our drug use disorders include cutting drug use by fifty percent, reducing crime by eighty percent, and reducing arrests by up to sixty-four percent, as well as improving health, increasing employment, and increasing overall social functioning of the individuals who have been treated. And whereas, to help more people achieve and sustain long-term recovery, Burke Recovery, Burke Substance Abuse Network, the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services, the Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration, the White House Office of National Drug Control Policy, and the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services, Division of Mental Health, Department of Developmental Disabilities and Substance Abuse Services invite all residents of North Carolina to participate in National Recovery Month. Now therefore, I, Mel Cohen, mayor of the city of Morganton, do hereby proclaim September 2015 as Alcohol and Drug Addiction Recovery Month in Morganton and commend its observance to all citizens, adopted this the fourteenth day of September 2015. Mel Cohen, mayor, Sally Sandy, city clerk, a motion.
Second.
Alright, have a motion, second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Joe, you're welcome to the microphone. As many times as you've been here.
Yeah. Uh, Mel, thank you, city council and members of this fine body, I thank you in this fine city, I thank you as well. I thank you for Burke Recovery, I thank you for Burke Substance Abuse Network, and I personally thank you because I'm a recovered alcoholic. I recovered from a hopeless state of mind and body. To use a baseball analogy, I've been able to find a path around the basis of life and it's, it's because of, of people like yourself proclaiming and making citizens of Morganton aware that prevention, treatment, and recovery services are available, I thank you and I thank you for this proclamation. So, have a wonderful evening.
Thank you, Joe.
I'm gonna go home and play with my, my dog now. I don't have a cat. See ya.
Okay, community appearance awards, by the way, Chad, if you'll put those up and I'm gonna go back and do some other things in a minute. Chad?
Oh, oh, hell.
There we go.
Yeah.
Grace Ridge received the Community Appearance Award in the city of Morganton by its Community Appearance Group and they did a magnificent job. Brenda is here with us and we wanna thank you Brenda for your guidance, Brenda Yost, who's over the entire complex and we greatly appreciate what you do and the support you give the city. Thank you.
That's beautiful.
Yeah, very much so. Entreat is a new business, new-er business downtown Morganton and it's done a fabulous job and they received the award also and you see what they're on the corner where Cornell's used to be, probably a picture of them up on the walls here in City Hall, and it's a magnificent restoration job as well as a active business. Okay, that's it.
Then are you gonna talk about the commendation letters?
The electricity.
Well, no, we're not, no, we're not doing that.
You wanna do that?
Yeah. Brown Mountain Bottle Works, by the way, also for the visual improvement of the site with the addition of iron works on the sidewall. Ginluma Clayworks Studio for visual improvements to the downtown business site, creating special beauty in a small space. Patterson's Amish Furniture, gorgeous business for visual improvements to the site, creating, enhancing the area in front of the store with a very inviting porch. And then Burke Arts Council for their visual improvements to the site with the onings, plants, and overall appearances. So, it was a very well-done program that the Morganton Community Appearance did. Thank them very much. that the Morganton Community Appearance did. Thank them very much. All right, and go back. Farmer's Market continues on Wednesday. And on Saturday, Wednesday's on the corner of Avery Avenue and Green Street. And then the Saturday is down at the railroad. Revolutionary War Week in Burke County. Sally, you want to say a few words about that?
Sure. There are all kinds of activities coming up to take place September twenty-sixth through October first. And there are all sorts of activities planned that the public is invited to. Those are taking place in a variety of places. We are putting up information and we'll be linking that information on our website. Activities are gonna happen on the old Burke County Courthouse. They're gonna happen out at the McDowell House. They're gonna happen at Catawba Meadows. And then they're gonna happen, there's actually gonna be a crossing of the river on October the first. So look, find out about all that information, participate. I think it will be a wonderful several days and a nice celebration for that.
Municipal Power Agency, Sally.
Nothing at this time. And the Electric City Safety Award is postponed till next month because the gentleman who wanted to be here couldn't be here tonight.
All right, and I should mention.
Anyone's following along.
And before we get into consent agenda, I must tell you and the people out in TV land that we had the Thirty-Fourth Annual Historic Morganton Festival this past weekend. And I sort of hesitate about quoting someone, but our Director of Public Safety said it was one of the most orderly festivals that we have ever had in the City of Morganton. And we had thousands and thousands and thousands of people downtown Morganton. It was a great weekend. The weather was perfect. So again, it was highly successful. And as I said from the stage, no town in the eastern seaboard gives the kind of quality entertainment that we gave Friday and Saturday night. Thompson Square and Parmley on Saturday and Thompson Square on Friday. For the cost, I mean, free to the public, it's hard for the public to understand that, but it's free to the public. And we had thousands of people every which way. They were, they have a big screen and people were standing and eating and stuffing that corn dog down and watching great entertainment. Again, I thank all the Public Safety, Electric, Public Works, Public, all the, all the.
Everybody.
Yeah, everybody played a part in it.
Safe to say, everybody.
All right. Consent agenda, Sally.
The consent agenda before you tonight has nine individual items. Would ask that you consider adopting those in one motion unless someone wants something removed to be discussed separately. For those of you viewing at home, that includes minutes from the August third council meeting, tax releases in the amount of three thousand seven hundred four dollars and ninety-five cents, a state requirement to appoint the tax collector and to order the tax collector to begin collecting taxes, of which we've been doing since July one, a budget amendment to receive private donations of three hundred and seventy-five dollars, that is to help out with the Big League World Series expenses, a budget amendment out of the city's funds of thirty-two thousand seven hundred and fourteen to help cover the expenses of both of those trips, a budget amendment to receive ten thousand two hundred and forty dollars from a trade-in and equipment trade-in in public safety, fifty-dollar personal contribution to the Etta Baker Memorial Project at Kama, a five-year extension of the lease agreement with the State Employees Credit Union for the ATM located near Martha's Park. That would be at a rate of three thousand dollars a year. They would pay to keep that there. Budget amendment to appropriate thirteen thousand dollars in additional funding for the purchase of the new leaf vacuum truck that is in this year's budget. And also the award of that bid on state contract for a hundred and sixty-six thousand eighteen dollars and fifty-two cents. And finally, three years financing with First Citizens for that at an interest rate of one point two six percent. And then the authorization for the rep publication of our city code. Our code and charter is now online and available for folks to view and see. And we think that's a really great thing.
I'm hoping we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion second. All in, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. New business, consideration of acceptance of the North Carolina Drinking Water State Revolving Fund Loan Offer and Acceptance Clearwell, Sally.
You will recall that we have been trying now for a couple of years to get some state money to help with the replacement of the clear wells at the water treatment plant. We have finally been successful in that. And you have taken action along the way to allow us to do that. Now we finally got our final offer of that loan. This is the acceptance of that. The loan is one million two hundred seventy-three thousand five hundred and fifty-two dollars. It's for a term of twenty years and it is at zero percent interest. And so we would certainly like to accept those dollars.
So move.
Second.
Motion second. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Consideration of a request submitted by Connor Investments LLC to permanently close and abandon a portion of Steakhouse Road, also identified as Randall Street, State Road, eighteen sixteen, Sally.
You'll recall that during the several years of the construction project at Exit One Oh Five, that the entrance, the old entrance into the Sagebrush had been basically closed and taken out of service. A different access to the restaurant was given. The old one is not going to be reopened. And there still exists some right-of-way. And we basically need to give up that right-of-way and close that portion officially. I can tell you that Connor Investments has bought the property on either side. And there is going to be a new drive entrance that will allow you to go to that restaurant off of the Sterling Street, Highway eighteen, which should be a great improvement for them. So basically, we're just asking you to abandon the right-of-way that's been abandoned already for three years.
And to clarify, the new drive, the new entrance will be a private drive, not a street. So it will be our responsibility.
Motion to adopt a resolution of intent to permanently close and abandon a portion of right-of-way of Steakhouse Road, Randall Street, and set a public hearing date of Monday, November the second, two thousand and fifteen, at six P.M. in the City Hall Council Chambers to consider this action.
Second.
We have a motion second. Any discussion?
And if I might, just to clarify, that's the November meeting because there's not sufficient time because of the delayed September meeting to advertise for October. So we'll have to hold this in November.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Consideration of a revised resolution authorizing the City of Morganton to submit an application to the Greater Hickory Metropolitan Planning Organization in the amount of one million three hundred and thirty-four thousand five hundred and sixty-six dollars for surface transportation program, direct appointment funds for the Morganton Downtown Greenway Connector Project. Sally.
That's quite a title, isn't it? Back in the winter, we became available, or we became aware that there may be some federal funding available to fund the type of projects that this is. And we talked about it last spring. In June of this year, you actually approved a resolution that we would make application for one point two million dollars through the Greater Hickory Metropolitan Planning Organization, which is the transportation organization that we participate in with the COG, to apply for that funding. We went through the first part of that process and we were given the go-ahead to continue in the process and think that we have good prospects of getting these dollars. Since that time, now that that has happened, there's been a meeting with the North Carolina Department of Transportation officials. And just so everyone at home and those of you in the audience know, this is the project that would pick up in downtown where the Greenway on Green Street stops now and go behind the businesses located there, travel down, go around by the indoor pool, the Mountain View Recreation Center, and ultimately would cross the bypass with a tunnel that would go under the road and connect basically downtown with a pedestrian way and a bike way to Catawba Meadows and the Greenway. And since that time, in looking at it, now that there's been some additional work done, there are water and sewer utility obstructions in the section where DOT is willing to let us tunnel under the road. And so the new cost for the project is one point six million dollars, a million six hundred sixty-eight thousand to two hundred eight dollars and fifty cents, to be exact. In order to apply for the additional dollars, and we have been told that they are available and been invited to apply for them, we have to match twenty percent. The two hundred and forty original match would come out of general fund capital dollars and the additional ninety-three thousand six hundred forty-one dollars and seventy cents that would be required. Staff would ask that you consider taking those from the CDBG infrastructure funds with our annual CDBG entitlement funding. And in order to do that, we have to amend our resolution and able to be able to apply for the additional dollars.
I move we adopt a resolution authorizing the application of one million three hundred and thirty-four thousand five hundred and sixty-six dollars in STPDA funds through the Western Feedmont Council of Government and certifying the availability of twenty percent matching funds for completion of the Downtown Greenway Connector Project.
Second.
We have a motion second. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Consideration of easement agreement with Senior Deaf and Blind Community LLC, including cross easement, Sally.
I think Louis is gonna discuss that one with you.
Yes. When the city sold the property on South College Street to the Senior Deaf and Blind Community, we of course kept the tract of about one and a quarter acres at the corner of McDowell and South College. Attached to your packet, there is a sketch map that depicts the area. It's a very rough map that was prepared by Senior Deaf and Blind, by their engineer. They had, from the beginning, it had been planned that there would be an access of what I'd call a back access to their project known as Alder Springs off of McDowell Street. If you look at the sketch map with College Street at the top and therefore, Kama is across College Street, the building that is under construction now for Alder Springs would be off to the right of this map. And the structure that's shown on the sketch is the planned future community center building for Alder Springs. It had always been planned and was understood that they would convey the, what would actually be the southwestern corner, the back corner of their property to the folks, the group that now owns the old armory building for parking, for the development of a parking lot. And that was part of the understanding when they bought from the city. The sketch map shows the area where that parking lot would be. The proposed street is shown as, it's designated as cross-access easement. Excuse me, I said street, would be a driveway. This would not be a public street. Would extend from McDowell Street into the Alder Springs area. It would also be the sole means of access to that proposed armory parking lot. The Senior Deaf and Blind Center has asked the city to grant an easement. And after considerable discussion, we have agreed to one that would be forty feet in width across the very back of our existing city property to allow access to the Alder Springs and to this parking lot. It would also serve as an excellent access for fire or other emergency vehicles. The city would of course retain the right to use that easement. The drive would be built entirely at the expense of Senior Deaf and Blind or the armory people. In return, the city would receive not only the right, of course, to continue crossing that, but a cross parking easement for the proposed armory parking lot, which I believe is supposed to have close to one hundred spaces, and a easement for parking on the Senior Deaf and Blind facility between our property and the proposed community building, if in fact, any parking is ever built there. The Senior Deaf and Blind has not proposed to pay the city anything for this easement. We of course would retain ownership of the property, but the city would gain considerable benefits from having another access to this property and the parking. The parking would be available when it was not being used by the armory and would be available not only as for this, our one point two acre tract that we retain for any development, but also would be the overflow parking for public safety and for Kama for when events are held and would therefore be of considerable value. And therefore, we recommend approval of this easement. Easement agreement, I should say.
Motion to approve easement agreement between the City of Morganton and the Senior Deaf and Blind Community LLC and to authorize the mayor and city manager to execute this document and make any necessary corrections or non-substantive alterations.
Second.
Have a motion. We have a second. Any discussion?
Yeah, actually, is it up in there or who is gonna actually pay for construction of that drive-through there?
Well, it's, Senior Deaf and Blind would pay for it. Now, if they make some agreement with the armory group to share the cost, that would be up to them.
So in the, in the overall, if we grant this, then in the overall construction, it's actually gonna take place, then I take it, then. It's not gonna be up in there. And when's this gonna actually happen?
It should happen at now as they are developing their site and coming to their final agreement on the development of that parking lot on the back corner. In the near future, I mean, like, maybe not next week, but in the near future, as that parking lot is being developed, it would happen at that time.
That's what we've been advised, yes.
Okay. Months or, months or?
I'm assuming months would be the way to look at it. Whether it's done, I mean, at this late in the season, I would expect it would have to be next year, frankly. But since this would be the access to that parking lot and those people really want their parking lot, and since Senior Deaf and Blind needs to sell the property to raise money, I think that's the way the thing will pan out.
I'm assuming you said there would be forty feet.
That's correct.
And the schematic shows that there'd be forty-eight, but it's just been reduced to forty feet.
That is correct. At my request, they agreed to take less. Okay.
Okay. Motion second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Meeting's adjourned. By the way, I'm sorry, we're delaying number fifteen. Closed session is being delayed. Meeting is adjourned.